Your Honor.
Okay. It's three o'clock. We will call the special meeting of the Marion City Council on Tuesday, Wednesday, June 20, June 2, 2021 to order. This is a special meeting that's been called to for the council to discuss the manner in which we want to go forward with a city manager search in light of Lon Bluckon's announcement that he has accepted a position in another city. So we have everyone but one council member present? Okay, great. Well, thanks for joining us, everybody. I think we want to start by kind of by weighing the options in terms of hiring a search firm or doing a targeted search or doing both? And Kirsten, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely pros and cons. We're, you know, rounding third base with our deputy search. We finalized the candidate pool. We've invested about $15,000 at this point, plus my salary and time during that process. Candidates are warm. It's typically my experience and best practice to have your number one hire their own deputy. The challenge with hiring a deputy first is they get the role, they're on their career path, and then a city manager could come in and derail that process, and there's engagement issues and things like that. But as far as which one we do first, that's up for debate. Like I said, there's pros and cons for both.
Good. Are there any council opinions on whether or not, I mean, are there people who think we shouldn't hire a search firm? Are there any opinions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Grant here. I think, given the other activities, and I was sensitized by comments from Steve earlier this afternoon, just the activities that are going on with the city, the number of positions that we have, I would, I would, I would advocate that we hire a search firm and part of that, part of that engagement with a search firm is to talk with them about optimizing the pace at which that search is conducted to deliver us a qualified candidate pool as quickly as possible. In other words, we kind of take Kirsten's potential impediments with other priorities on her plate and optimize our pathway through or with a search firm. I didn't say any of that well, but I think you get where I'm going.
So, and maybe Kirsten or Lon, if you, if you know, like, what's the, what is the average time that we should expect going through a search firm? And, you know, like, what are sort of the high points? How, you know, so say if we were to hire a search firm, I assume first we would do a request for qualifications, and then select a firm, and then, once you select a firm, what is, what is expected timeline in terms of getting candidate, a candidate pool back and then going through the process and then, you know, you finally hire someone? What, what does that look like? Is that 60 days? Is that 90 days? Is that, what's a reasonable timeline?
I would say, you know, just to create realistic expectations, you probably want to expect 120 days. Now, with a search like this, you wouldn't necessarily have to do a full-on request for proposals if we just picked a couple of firms and asked them to give specific proposals so that the city council could do a fairly quick consideration on those. But normally, I figure that it take, they're going to want to advertise for around 40 days. And then they're going to want to take it probably will go faster now that we're starting to come out of just because I think that candidates are going to be more willing to travel. Together and go through the search process for doing those types of things. I would say on this one, we probably would be able to
I would say on this one, we probably just because of the fact that because we started the deputy city manager search, and as we've looked at bringing a city attorney on board, we've already done a lot of the program. Normally, a search firm is going to want to come in, they're going to want to study the city, interview all of you, develop the search profile for the candidate that you're looking for, but we created a lot of that, so we have the template for it that's already done from the deputy city manager position. So that could be tweaked, that takes a good two to three weeks out of the equation right away. So that allows it to move more quickly.
And if I may, this, this is a little bit of a dynamic situation because we have started that process with the deputy. So I would advise almost a multi-pronged approach of absolutely engaging as an executive search firm, but we do our own process as well. We will be able to move much faster, even with the expedited process that Lon suggested, we will be able to move much quicker, so we could potentially have internal candidates. We could potentially have candidates that would be on a stretch goal that are currently in the deputy application pool, but perhaps there's someone there that we could look at. So in my mind, these are parallel, you know, trains on parallel tracks. There's no reason why we could not do both.
We would advertise on our own, advertise the position at the same time that a search firm is?
We absolutely could.
Searching, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's one thing. We could also, you know, anyone that's got connections out there or that knows people, we could, you know, have those conversations. I reached out to a mayor friend of mine in Tempe, Arizona. I know he's good friends with the mayor of Dubuque. I'm sorry, Des Moines, and see if he knew anybody. So that whole networking process can happen in conjunction with the search firm and all the other avenues as well. So I think, I think we need to be looking, you know, overturning all the rocks is what I'm saying.
Okay. Are there any comments or thoughts on that from council, whether we should do one or the other or both dual, dual track approach? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
So are we understanding from Kirsten that Kirsten, are you recommending both paths at the same time?
I am.
And we can shorten that whole timeframe since we, as Lon was describing, we've done a lot of that legwork, that the information that a search firm will use, and we are, like, we are using a search firm right now for the deputy city manager.
We are.
Okay.
So another order of business we need to determine is are we going to continue the deputy process?
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
That we can have today. Yeah, great.
Can we, can we use the same search firm we're using for the deputy for the city manager? Would that save us time also, or do we need to put it out there?
My sense is that Kirsten doesn't recommend that, like, I'll let her talk, but.
That process took much longer than anticipated. They proposed a timeline. I countered with a more expedited timeline. I did not hear back from them after reaching out a couple of times, and now we, we are beyond the original proposed timeline. It was too long to begin with. So that would not be my recommended course of action.
Okay.
I would look to another search firm.
And we do have, we do have the name of the firm that were located Lon, and my understanding, you know, for this new position, and my understanding is that they specialize in city manager searches.
We've got a handful we can absolutely reach out to. Yeah, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yeah, yes.
Just a quick question. Kirsten, are we currently doing that process with the deputy city manager where we're using a firm and we're doing our sort of own process on the side? So would that be?
Not currently. What has happened is we engaged with that firm to source candidates, and then we would build out the rest of the process, the actual interview process, but they, we needed them to source candidates. Interestingly enough, they presented us with 22 candidates. We narrowed the search from that pool to 13, and I believe it's three of those 13 we sourced on our own, as it turns out, just by word of mouth and advertising and things like that. So we are not doing any active search on our own, but there are some things that are happening organically, so.
So if we do that parallel, so we're not doing that now, but if we do that with the city manager's search and we, we find our own candidate, then, then in essence, we're not using their services, I mean, all of their services, so is that accurate? I'm trying to figure out what's the benefit of not just sending all the candidates sort of through their process? Is it, is there money savings? Is there time savings? I mean, we're not doing it now. Okay.
It's time and money. Exactly.
Yeah, it really comes down to we could start reaching out to potential candidates, interested parties, and put together a list that could come in and interview with the council. We could do that in a month. And by the time we get proposals back, review the proposals, get them in front of the city council to act on, get the contract executed, you're four to six weeks out from starting today to solicit a search firm if you want to really do that process and do it right. So when Kirsten talks about paralleling the two of those, one would really kind of be ahead of the other. And if you weren't happy with any of the candidates that you looked at from doing the more targeted search, we'd be ready to launch right into doing the search with the firm.
So it really wouldn't be parallel. We'd be doing our own search. If we didn't find somebody, then this one would be ready to kind of hit the button to go forward, right? I mean, because we wouldn't bring all the candidates at the same time. It sounds like we would have our own, and then potentially what the search firm might bring us. Is that right?
That's how I would see it playing out.
Okay.
Yeah, one train's moving at a faster pace for sure, but it gets us ahead of the curve, and timing is obviously of the essence. So I didn't want to waste any time, and if we're able to source our own candidate, that's the right candidate, and we're that much further ahead, there's goodness in that. I didn't see the harm if anybody had potential candidates in mind to be reaching out proactively.
Right, I mean, there can't be any harm by having a bigger pool. We want to draw the most, you know, qualified candidates that we can, and so we can have our choice and pick the best candidate. I think Steve had a comment.
So when you, when you're using a search firm, look in these two different paths, Kirsten, who is doing a review of the applications? I remember when, when Lon was hired, the city manager candidates at that time had, maybe this is something that Jeff Schott used, I can't remember, but there was a line at that time, if you remember, a very long, a very extensive application that you filled out that in my opinion would take hours and hours and hours. It's not just a resume. I mean, they had to complete a very extensive application. So who is going to manage that process? There's still a long application that these city managers, potential city managers would fill out. So I need to understand the process and also where you would advertise.
Sure, every search firm has their own vetting process, and how extensive it is would vary from one to another. As honed in as we can create the profile to give them, the faster they're going to be able to move. The other thing that we can dictate, like I said, with our current search firm, I simply asked them to source candidates. I didn't ask them to go through a true vetting process. In fact, they didn't even vet minimum qualifications. So that could be tailor-made on our end up front. So, and I think in this instance, we would want to make it as targeted as possible.
So we'd want them to vet the candidates?
Yes.
We wouldn't want them to just send us
Correct. So we just want to create a very detailed profile of the needs of the city and what we're looking for in the next city manager.
Okay. And just for whatever it's worth for the council's information, the, the last search, which was, which resulted in hiring Lon, the city council at that time engaged the former city manager Jeff Schott to run it. Is that your recollection, Lon?
Yeah.
That's my understanding is that Jeff Schott managed the whole process of finding his replacement.
Yeah. Yeah, he had moved on to the Institute of Public Affairs at the University of Iowa, which did some of that type of work for communities.
And that was one of Jeff's roles in that position at the University of Iowa.
Okay. So any additional thoughts or comments on the type of process we should use?
Yeah, Your Honor, just, just to clarify, and correct me if I'm wrong, but so the model that we're seem to be landing on here is, is that a search firm will be acquiring candidates in parallel with our own self-identification of candidates, and the net output of both of those parallel streams of activity will then present us a potential hiring pool. Am I under, understanding that what we're trying to do?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So Kara, do we do we make these decisions by formal vote, or how do we make these decisions? And, and does that happen now or at an actual, like, at the next meeting or?
I believe with this one, Mayor, I mean, really, if the consensus of the council is to move that direction, Kirsten and I can get started on it and then bring it back to the city council. I don't know that a formal motion is needed for us to be able to set that this in way, get it going.
Yeah, I don't, I agree with Lon. I don't think you need any sort of a formal resolution or more motion. You can, this is already being done in an open session, so you don't have to worry about this being a closed session issue. As long as you have kind of a consensus of what you want them to do moving forward, then Lon and Kirsten would be able to do that. Now, if they would get to a point where they would need some sort of council authority to continue the process, then the anticipation would be that they would bring that back.
Or if there's a, a contract to be signed or approved and those, those types of things.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So is there, is there anyone on council who is, is opposed to, to the dual approach? Are there any, you know, strong feelings one way or the other? And Steve, I see you had a question, so we can get to that, but anybody have a strong feeling one way or the other about the dual approach, or is that kind of a consensus that we can go down that path?
To have that.
Go ahead, Will.
A little, a little bit of a concern that that could potentially I mean, if, if go the dual route and you start talking to some people prior to even doing the search where it's actually out there nationwide to find someone, would we miss out on someone who would be a better fit because we didn't advertise it nationally, or is, or are you able to advertise it nationally, or is it just word of mouth?
We, we
For my profession, if you put it on the ICMA website, it's going to get everywhere.
It's good, okay. So, and we can do that. A search firm doesn't have to do that.
I'm a member, so we can use my membership to do that.
So everyone would know that it's available, okay? I guess that uses my mind, because I just hate to miss out on someone because we didn't have it nationally advertised. So, okay, thank you.
The goal of this, Will, is to actually cast a wider net to identify candidates. The more we can yield better qualified, the better choice we have, right? So, so we, in doing our own, it just allows us to move it a little bit quicker. And, and we may find great candidates, and we may need to
Yeah, and I guess, and I may be wrong, and somebody correct me, but as, as I envision it, we would start by doing this, our own, our own advertising, and we're not going to skip the other, the other step of having the search firm provide candidates also into the pool, unless there's just this, you know, somebody who's just absolutely stellar that everyone is just convinced this is the absolute best person, you know, in our own search. But otherwise, I think we would continue and see what that produces too, and then we'd have a greater pool of people, of qualified candidates that, that we have to choose from. I mean, that's just how I would envision it. But, oh, Steve, did you have a comment? I don't want to skip you, sorry.
Well, that's fine. Yeah, I was going to make a comment that I do agree to the dual approach. Again, because I know that we were going to be able to get it posted on the IMCA website, and to me, that is the most critical posting that's going to be out there. That's going to everybody on a nationwide basis. Individuals that may want to come back back to the Midwest. The other comment I was going to make is discussion we're going to have to have as far as what our committee will be, the committee organization, through the vetting process to review the applications and resumes.
And resumes.
So I don't know what thought has been put into that yet. Maybe it's still early. But when we did that, when we hired Lon, there was a fairly large committee with a mixture of staff, people, city council. So I don't know going forward what process we want to use to accomplish that.
I mean, that's a very good point to bring up, and I think we can start thinking about that and certainly.
We don't need to decide today. We need to start thinking about that pretty quick.
And we can bring it back to the council to weigh in on that and make sure that everybody's happy with the process. Colette?
Yeah, so I'm good with the parallel approach. I think it's really important, though, because there were two different Lon, I think, said something that was different than what you just said, Mayor. So I think it's really important that we sort of shore that up in the sense of there was this, I think initially it was a, we would recruit our own, and maybe we would look at those first, and then continue on with the, the other group that this company or organization would recruit for us. I think it's important we're going to use both of those processes that the, the group of qualified candidates that we want to review for this position we're reviewing at the same time, right? I think it speaks to what Will was stating is we would hate to sort of settle on somebody that maybe somebody has encouraged to apply, and we haven't seen what this recruiting firm brings forward to us as well. So I do think it's important for us to look at them collectively at the, right, at the same time to make a decision on who we would bring forward as our top candidates.
Your Honor, just one, a thought to that point.
Yes.
I would hope that what we could do is define some milestones for both the search firm and ourselves to acquire groups of applicants and move ourselves through a process where if the first group is less robust, we know that two weeks later, we hopefully will have an additional set of applicants being presented to us. And through perhaps then a series of two or three milestones, we have the visibility to the most viable and interested candidates that might, might be presented to us. I'd hate to leave our case open-ended because then it could take four months, as Lon suggested. Whatever we can do from a strategy or tactic standpoint to move through this faster, I think, would be move us to do that.
I think I caught most of that, but you really were cutting out a lot, but I think I got the gist of it. Were there any comments or questions on what Grant just said? Okay, so is the consensus that we would have Kirsten identify search firms? And then, at the same time, put together a plan to to advertise our, on our own? And kind of, could you put together just a, a summary of how all this would work? And, and maybe the milestones along the way? Is that, is that okay with everyone? Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but to get back to Colette's point, I don't think you can allow a significant amount of time between these two groups of names coming together. So with that, if we're going to go with the search firm route, I would certainly suggest we do whatever we can to shorten that timeframe in that selection. I don't want to put out an RFP. Send that out. We're going to allow two to three weeks to get RFPs back. We go through all of that. You know, I would trust Kirsten's background and ability to narrow that down to two fairly quick, find some quick process to get that down to one so that we can get moving on. So I don't want to make the selection of the search firm add a lot of time upfront. I would, I would support a direction that shortens that as much as possible. Bring these two into a, as much of a parallel path as we can.
Yeah, and to Grant's point about potentially looking at kind of different groupings of candidates or cops of candidates. In my profession, when an organization is doing that, you'll see them advertise, but they'll say, they'll put kind of a soft deadline in where it says, first review of applications starts on this date. And that lets people know that they, if they really want to be in the first crop, they need to have them in by a certain date, but if they miss it by a day or two, or you know, see it a week later, they still have the opportunity to submit, but it, it really kind of fronts loads the process to keep things moving along.
Colette, just to your point, and it's a very valid one, we, and to let everyone know what I have in my mind as we're doing this, is picture the, our search as just maybe one or two steps ahead of the search firm, so that if the search firm doesn't yield any qualified candidates or one that we're truly interested in, we're just two steps ahead so that we can pull a lever and move that much quicker. Timings of the essence, but I'll be managing my process closely to theirs. That's where the goodness comes in. Does that make sense? Okay.
Sounds like it does, okay. And I think, you know, we're, we're in a much, the city is in a much better position than it was during the last city manager searches, in that we have a, a human resources director to help manage that process and to guide it along, so. So I have, you know, I have all the confidence in the world that we're going to, this is going to be a really, you know, positive, productive and positive process, so. Any other questions on that, then? Everyone clear on what direction we're heading? Yes, go ahead, Will.
Well, I'm assuming that, and in my opinion, I think this should be priority number one for Kirsten, and I'm, I'm assuming that's the thought for everyone, that just drop everything else for the most part, obviously not everything, but make this top priority to get, to get going on it.
Well, I've had multiple desk clearing moments since I started. This will be another one.
No vacation for Kirsten.
Well, and I'm just by the, the tone of the conversation, I'm getting the sense that the council thinks that we should just go ahead and pause the deputy search. We can notify the candidates. I mean, anybody who's from Iowa already knows that was in the pool, what's going on, and they would certainly understand on that. And hopefully, if we're pausing that, that'll open up at least a little bit of bandwidth for Kirsten to kind of shoehorn this in there.
Okay, so since we've moved on to that topic, is there what are the feelings of the council on that, whether or not we should pause the deputy search and allow the new city manager to be part of that process, or, or, or continue, you know, where we are, or, you know, continue with that process? Any, any particular feelings on that? I, I know several of you have already expressed that you think we should wait. I just want to bring it out here in this public meeting.
I would say
Go ahead, Will, and then we'll go to Grant.
I would say pause.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Your Honor, I, I would agree. I think we should pause that recruitment, and at the base of my thinking is, is that even if we finished that out and the successful applicant came on board, they're going to be, they're going to be in a situation where they're trying to get their bearings in an altogether new environment and might not necessarily provide us the effective bridge that we might desire, but I think it's really paramount that the new city manager really weighs in heavily as to who their number two ought to be, because they may have some thoughts about management and organizational design and other things that will be important to advantage with the, they're doing the selection.
Your Honor.
Oh, Steve, go ahead, and then we'll go to Colette.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's absolutely essential that the city manager select the deputy city manager. They've got to have a vital role in that decision.
Okay, Colette?
Sure, so I, I would agree with that. My question is, I would agree, we need to wait to hire the deputy or city manager. What will we do in the interim? Will we appoint an interim? How does, what does that look like for us?
Good question.
Yeah, I think once we get a better idea of the schedule, the council could contemplate doing something like that. If you're going to have both positions vacant for an extended period of time, 30 days, 90 days, you just have to have someone functioning in that role. And, you know, in normal day-to-day business, you may not, it may not be And, you know, in normal day-to-day business, you may not, it may not be a critical thing. People can still keep the seat warm and still keep projects moving forward. But my fear would be is, you know, having something like another natural disaster or something like that, you just need somebody who's going to be the go-to that can make some of those decisions on an operational basis to keep things moving along. So we'll explore that. I would suggest that for an interim, you probably are going to want to appoint someone internally. I'll have a couple of conversations. There are a few candidates that I think would be interested in doing something like that. The big key is we just have to make sure if we're going to tap somebody internally to step into that role, that they have some backfill for their position to make sure that things don't grind to a halt in their absence.
That answer your question, Colette? Okay. Anyone else? Particular thoughts on that? I mean, I'll add my two cents. I really believe that we should halt the search and wait as others have expressed, so.
I have a question for Kara. From a legal perspective, I'm not sure that we should actually keep the two positions open officially. I think that we should effectively close the deputy. I'd be looking to insight from her, but I think that we should close the deputy for now. And then, and then reopen potentially.
So is that a legal question?
Well, we've got an open, that's for Kara to answer, I think.
So that's a little, okay, good, I did unmute. That's a little out of my expertise, but I can take a look into that and get back to you, Kirsten. Or I can maybe even run that by Holly quickly. She knows a lot more on the employment side. As far as like, in just like general terms of being, I wouldn't see any problem either way, but from an employment specialization, I'm just not comfortable answering that level of question. But if you have a question about ordinances or contracts, I'm your lady.
You're our person, okay.
Okay. So is there anyone who feels completely the other way, that we should not halt the deputy search? Or is the consensus again that we, that we do halt it? Okay. I think we have the consensus. Anything else we need to be considering at this point? You know, we've we've got a general idea of how we're proceeding, that the paths we're going to take. Any other, anything else we should be, anything else on the council's mind right now that we need to bring out at this point and have answered for us? Anything you think we should be doing that we need to be concerned about or looking at in addition to all of this?
I have a question out of complete ignorance. When something like this happens, is there any report out to the public of what our plan is? So that they know how we're going to approach filling Lon's position? What does that look like?
So as you said that, I was thinking, okay, so how do we communicate to the public? Because the public is going to be very interested and curious about what we're doing. And I think we do need to do that in order with Amber to put the plan out in terms of where we're headed, what we plan to do.
And from my point, there's a lot of administrative stuff.
Gay.
I'm sorry, who was speaking?
Robin from the Times are on the meeting as well.
Robin from the Times are on the meeting as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Kirsten, I can't answer that one too. This isn't, this is an open meeting. So everything that we've talked about now is essentially already a public record.
Sure. But I think Kirsten's point is that, you know, the people in the city are going to be asking questions and wondering where we are, what we're doing. So it may not be a bad idea to just put something concise together that we can, that we can even share with people, you know. That we can, we can talk about that.
Well, now that we have direction from the council, we'll work with Amber to get something crafted to put out.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just a thought, as we go through this process, as we have discussed here today, maybe we should just have a standing discussion item on our go-forward council agendas that we, we ourselves are updated as to any progress or impediments that are coming forward as well as then that serves to help inform the public.
I think that's a good idea. Anyone have particular thoughts on that or opposed to that?
So my internet froze up, so I did not know what he said.
Grant suggested that we add an item to the agenda, a regular item to the agenda for our regular meetings where there's an update on the, on the search process. Okay?
Good idea.
I see it in your head, so I think you're, okay. All right, and Colette's shaking yes, so, okay. Good, now I'll give the thumbs up too. All right, well, anything else that we need to be discussing at this point?
Yeah, a question, Your Honor. How do we, just maybe some additional discussion and clarity on what I'm going to call the definition of the hiring attributes that we're looking for? And does this, would this include then a review of job description and making any necessary enhancements of that that we would see at this point in time? What, how do we, I guess, sharpen the specification for the recruitment that we want to achieve?
That's an excellent question. In terms of the job qualifications and the job description, do you think that we could send that out to the council members and have people look at that? Have everyone look at that and, and, you know, provide their comments if they feel like it should be, you know, changed in any way? I haven't seen it probably in a while, but.
I think, yeah, I think it's twofold. I think it's reviewing the job description for accuracy, making sure that the requirements are in fact what you're looking for. That's kind of the work that the city manager will do. But then there's also a cultural fit that I would say is equally important. And so that, you know, it's kind of a separate conversation, it's a little more subjective. But what are we looking for in those personal attributes and from that cultural standpoint? That is not necessarily going to be reflected in the job description.
So when do we, when do we finalize that so that you can put it out there when you do your search? Or, to me, that seems to be one of the first steps we should, we should accomplish then.
Who are we looking for?
Yeah, who are we looking for?
And as much as I hate to put work on Kirsten's plate at this point, I would suggest that the city council members, if you've got like a top five list or a top 10 list of attributes that you're looking for in a city manager, jot those into an email and send them to Kirsten. And then we can put them into a table to see what the common themes that would emerge from those are. And that will at least queue up the conversation.
Is that okay with everyone? Okay. I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up.
Did he say five or 10? Or is it five or 10?
He said five or 10, I think.
I'll take 10. 10 each.
Okay, so come up with 10 attributes that you think are important in our next city manager. And send those to Kirsten, if you, if you will, okay?
And look at the job description out.
And then we'll send out the job description for everyone to look at so that you can see what's already in. Go ahead, Steve.
That's what I was going to ask. So as we're doing that, she's going to send out the job description? And then we'll send those attributes to Kirsten?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that seems to be probably one of the very first steps we should, we should get done. So that we all agree on what we're looking for, and then we can move on and advertise it. Colette? Oh. Oh, I thought I saw you leaning forward to say something, so, okay. All right. Anything else that we need to cover today?
Actually, I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Kirsten.
In terms of the process, the interview process itself, my starting point, having not been here, would be to kind of lean into the process we use with Chief Kitzner. So if there was anything that anybody particularly liked about that or didn't like about it, I'd welcome that feedback as well, but that'll be a starting point for me. Just in terms of opening up and who we had a part of that and with the public and things like that, so.
Yeah. If I recall, that involved several groups of people. There was a broad, broad, broad groups, including council and staff and community people. And then decisions were made from there, okay? Okay, any other questions? Things that we need to clarify? Any issues, any additional thoughts from anyone?
Just a couple of things. Quick, Mayor, made me think about it when Kirsten had said leaning into the process that was used for the chief. So a couple of things, if we could, I don't remember what that process was. So if there's something that you can share with us, right, so we can review it and give some feedback. And then second request is, and this is fully self-serving, but in order to participate in these types of activities, which I really would like to and is very important, I think it's helpful to in advance have an idea of when meetings or interview sessions will be held, right? I know we can't do that today, but I'm saying in advance, further than a week or two, so then we can get things blocked off on our schedules so we can fully participate in this really important search.
Thank you for that. Okay. Okay, anything else on your mind? That we need to discuss at this point? Or do we have a good understanding of the process and at least a beginning game plan of how we're proceeding through this? Okay? If there's nothing else, appreciate everyone's time. Thank you for making time for this special meeting, and we'll see you all tomorrow.
Take care, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.